This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the September 12 South Whitehall Township Planning Commission meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is in effect by the United States Department of Defense. One nation under God, indivisible, with all its needs and just for.
Mr. Manhart, are you doing the roll call?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Trevor Dombach. Tim Dugan.
Here.
Todd Feringer. Brian Height.
Here.
Diane Kelly.
Here.
Mark Luth.
Here.
And Dave Wilson.
Here.
Mission for a quorum.
All right. Would you like to go over the meeting rules?
I would love to. Rules for participation and etiquette during planning commission meetings. For an orderly meeting wherein all attendees may be able to fully participate, we ask that you adhere to the following rules. In order that both in-person and remote attendees may hear all comments or questions, all in-person attendees will be required to use microphones at all times. We request that remote attendees, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Staff may mute the microphones of remote attendees if needed. Public questions and comments will be taken at periodic intervals throughout the agenda. We will start with no time limits, but planning commission chairman may impose a time limitation if there are many questions or the meeting is running short on time. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. Turn the podium microphone on and state your name, address, and comment or question. Please turn the microphone off when done. I will just make a note that it's a new microphone and there's no on-off switch. So we'll change that for the next one. For remote attendees, the chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address in the chat. When you are recognized and so directed, please unmute your microphone and state your comment or question. Mute your microphone when done. For all those who are accessing the meeting by phone only, staff will periodically ask for caller comments and unmute any callers. Callers must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Your cooperation and adherence to these rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like also to make note of township staff and consultants here tonight. We have Dave Manhart, Director of Community Development, Laura Harrier, Zoning Officer, Chris Stroller, Long Rage Planner, Lynn Labarre, Permits and Minutes Taker. We have Aaron Bett, Township Engineer with the Pidcock Company, and Jennifer Aldifer, Township Solicitor with Zeter Law. All right, we're on Agenda Item Number Three, Review and Approval of the August 8, 2024 Meeting Minutes. Does anyone have any comments? Looks like no comments. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'm moved.
I'll second. There's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain, I was not here.
I will abstain as well.
Any opposed? Unopposed? Three. Okay, we can always come back to the meeting minutes next month.
It is sufficient.
It is?
It's a majority of those that were present.
Okay. All right. We're on Agenda Item Number Four, Subdivision Review. 4A is the Dorney Park Sidewalks along Hamilton Boulevard. Mr. Manhart, would you like to do the Township Staff Presentation?
So we have a professional staff consultation for Dorney Park Sidewalks. The Dorney Park Sidewalks along Hamilton Boulevard project was a condition of the Dorney Park 2024 project. The sidewalk project connects the intersection of Haynes Mill Road with the existing sidewalk at the driveway entrance to Dorney Park. The project is being presented as a direction and discussion item because the ultimate approval and modifications are under purview of PENDOT. Additionally, the sidewalk was a condition of separate agreements with the Board of Commissioners. So it's an opportunity to provide comment, and we'll move those comments forward as they go through the Board of Commissioners, and ultimately, those comments will get forwarded to PENDOT. The applicants are here and are here to answer questions.
Can you speak in a township engineer review?
Sure. As Dave had mentioned, this is a discussion item. So the project does not require a formal action from the Planning Commission tonight. The sidewalk and its location have been vetted through by township staff in coordination with PENDOT during a site meeting back in June 2023. We have prepared a September 5 memo to provide comments for the applicant to consider in their design, as this project boundary is strictly within the limits of PENDOT right-of-way. A highway occupancy permit is required for this proposed project. Some comments to note from our review pertain to clear-site triangles, future bus shelter coordination, and general drafting requirements. The applicant has shared their design, as it has been submitted to PENDOT, and wanted to present the project to the Planning Commission tonight.
Anyone representing the applicant here, like to present?
We have a table now.
Okay, fair enough.
Table to the table.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris McLean from Fitzpatrick-Lensen-Bubba. Apparently in law school, they need to teach us how to use microphones a little better. So, sorry about that. Yeah, we're here to answer questions this evening. The history of the project, as Dave mentioned, began and arose out of the approval for an amusement ride last year. There is a separate agreement for frontage improvements that was signed by the applicant and the Board of Commissioners earlier this year. After some topography work and survey work, our engineers put together a layout, met with staff to tweak and refine that layout, and then ultimately submitted to PENDOT. We've been coordinating with township staff, PENDOT, and with Lanta concerning all of the details. And so we're here just to, as I said, answer whatever questions you have so that we can finalize the HOP submission and get that permit issued so we can begin construction.
All right, good commission. Any questions, comments?
I'm sorry, I didn't get that. Was there a submission to PENDOT already?
Yes, we received comments.
Did we, did the township get a copy of those comments?
Were you hoping this PENDOT could? I can summon.
I had a question. The Public Safety Committee met earlier this week, and the Police Department commented on the plan was that they would like to see the sidewalk provided with illumination. And one of our sergeants actually offered that they could do a lighting study if the applicant was interested. Is that an item that you would consider?
We can consider it. We just saw the comment earlier this week, so we're not sure of the scope. We'll have to coordinate, and we can certainly do so. We're not sitting here saying no, but we also can't commit to it until we better understand what the request is. But it's certainly open for discussion.
Very good, thank you.
I do want to say that that would need to be coordinated with PENDOT as well, because I know they have some strict requirements regarding lighting. And sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't want lighting because it might provide glare into the drive. There been any feedback from Lanta about bus stops?
Yes, we provided a concrete pad for the bus stop. Lanta mentioned how busy that bus stop is, that at some point in the future they might decide to put a shelter there. They asked us to enlarge the bus pad. We've done that. I'm shortly.
Great.
I just would like to say that, excuse me, that having driven over there about 10 days ago and watching people walk where the sidewalk's going to go, I think this is a great step in the right direction for the walkability of our township. So I want to thank you for pursuing this.
It's been a long time coming. Anyone on the planning, anyone else on the planning commission have any comments, questions? Is there anyone in the audience has comments, questions? Is there anyone online?
I'm not seeing any comments online.
Okay. All right, thanks for presenting. We think this is a great step, as Brian was saying, providing walkability, especially along that corridor there. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right. Agenda Item 4B was removed from the agenda. So we'll move on to 4C, Palmero Realty Waiver from Land Development. Mr. Manhart, can you do the staff presentation?
Yes, this is an application to develop the 1.1 acre tract located at 4580 Crackersport Road. The property currently consists of two existing buildings, one residential and one commercial, with existing parking areas for both uses. The proposal includes additions to the existing commercial, which is a veterinarian office, building with reconfigured parking and driveway. Access to the existing parking lot will be abandoned as it is situated on the adjoining property. With the reconfiguring, the driveway to be on the parcel. Property is served by public water and sewer and is owned by a highway commercial. Palmero Realty LLC is the owner and applicant. Previous township consideration variances were granted at the zoning hearing board at their July 24 meeting, and a summary has been provided in the packet. And with that, I'll hand it over.
Mr. Bett?
Sure. As mentioned in our September 5 memo to the township, a waiver from land development review was performed by our office. To give a brief history of the project, the initial plan submission was in April 2024 and was discussed at a meeting with township staff and ultimately pulled from the PC agenda. The applicant has prepared revised plans to be presented for the PC tonight, and our September 5 memo reviews this proposal. The comments contained in our memo pertain to a minor stormwater management narrative, clear-site triangles, and general drafting requirements. As described in our memo, there were three waiver requests for Crackersport Road frontage improvements in which we would recommend deferrals be requested. Specifically, we recommend that right-of-way is dedicated at this time to include a minimum of two feet beyond the existing curb line for maintenance purposes, and the remnant portion is deferred to the minimum lot sizing requirements per the zoning ordinance. In an effort to address comments 8F, 8I, and 8J in our memo, an additional waiver request letter was submitted yesterday. These waivers were specific to drafting items on the plan, and in the past, the PC has given relief to the applicant on this. We have no engineering objection to these three waivers, and ultimately leave it up to the PC to decide as this was received past the submission deadline. At this time, conditioned on addressing items in our September 5 memo, we can recommend engineering approval.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to do their presentation?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Chris McLean again from Fitzpatrick-Lensen-Bubba. To my right, Brian Palmero, the owner of the property through his LLC. And to the left, our engineer and planner. The project involves an expansion of the existing veterinary practice. And I'll have Dr. Palmero explain to you what he does momentarily just to give you a little bit of a flavor for the unique nature of his practice. But there is an existing commercial building on-site, and I'll say behind that from Crackersport Road, there is an existing greenhouse. The proposal is to convert a portion of the greenhouse and do a little bit of an addition to provide more space for the actual practice itself. As Dave mentioned, the parking area will be expanded and relocated to bring it fully onto the property. Right now, the access driveway and a small portion of the parking area are on the BMW dealership property to the south. We tried to work out an easement, but unfortunately were unable to do so. So that led to some challenges and ultimately to some zoning hearing board relief, which was mentioned a bit earlier. So I guess I'll pause there and ask Dr. Palmero to briefly explain his business, his practice, because it is unique, and I think that's just important for the planning to recognize what he's bringing to the township.
So thanks for having me here this evening. But we, I've been in Lehigh Valley for about 16 years. And 14 of the years we've been in South Whitehall Township, I've been treating patients, mostly dogs and cats. And I am weird, I treat fish too. So we actually see fish patients. But we see dogs and cats from all over the area. We have Lehigh Valley, Pocono, Wilkes-Barre. Because I specialize in dermatology and allergies, and there's no other, no one else in the Lehigh Valley that does that. You have to go down to Philadelphia or out to Pittsburgh or north to Ithaca. So we have a pretty big clientele, and we've kind of grown over the last 14 years, and we've grown out a little bit of our space. So we need some extra exam rooms. If you guys have pets, you go to the vet, you know that they, even though I'm amazing, you know that they don't always love to be there. And they are often stressed, so we need, we don't have a very big waiting room. So the goal is to add a little more space and have a few more exam rooms so the pets can not have to be up against each other and barking at each other and upset with each other. So we just want a little more space for us and the staff and some more parking, too.
Thank you, Brian. Excuse me. We have received all of the review comments and had a chance to review and digest them. I'll talk about the waivers separately in a moment, but from a broad standpoint, we have no issue with any of the review comments. We will work those out with staff and consultants prior to taking the plan to the commissioners. And so just to kind of pivot for a second then to the waivers. As Aaron mentioned, there are three essentially related that were requested initially with our submission relating to dedication of right-of-way along Crackersport, widening of Crackersport and sidewalk. We have no issue with characterizing those as deferrals, as Aaron summarized for everyone. And the three waivers that were submitted yesterday were a result of the review comments and realizing that our plan does not have things like 400 feet of, excuse me, existing contours from the property lines. That's Section 312, 12B15. And then two other sections, 312, 12B19, and 20. Those require significant man-made features and buildings within 100 feet of the site. We don't have that. We're in a developed area already, so that detail really isn't providing a whole lot for planning purposes. And then last would be Section 312, 12B21, requiring sidewalks, trails, driveways, street easements, and right-of-way within 400 feet of the site. Again, the site's being redeveloped to kind of repurpose some of the buildings that are there, and the surrounding properties have also themselves been developed. So we're not sure that really provides a whole heck of a lot of good information for the planning commission. If there's any comments or questions about the project, anything you'd like to talk about from the review letters, we're certainly happy to do so. But we're otherwise requesting the planning commission's favorable recommendation of our six waivers, and most importantly, the overall waiver of land development itself, which staff and the engineer said would be appropriate, subject to the conditions noted.
All right. Thank you. Anyone on the planning commission have questions, comments?
How many parking spaces do you have now, and how many are proposed?
At this point, 14 now. 16 plus 10, plus a few handicaps, 26.
So 26 proposed, and how many do you have now?
About 14 right now.
And is that 26 inclusive of the ADA spaces, or are those in addition to? So we'd actually be 20. So we'd be actually 29 with the ADA spaces.
Which is coming in compliance with what the township requests from that office. Previously, we had a variance for the number of spots that we have.
So the individuals that are in the residence, they'll be able to park in this parking lot?
They could.
I know they're parking on the street now, it seems.
There is a, there's actually a three, two-spot driveway next to the house.
Okay.
And they're able to park in there.
Okay.
But they can park in this lot as well as plenty of space for them once we have this additional.
So they won't be restricted if?
No, they could park in either spot.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I believe there's 26 total spaces, which is greater than what's required, so. I think, yeah, it's 26.
And much more than they have now, so.
Yeah, so it's a great improvement.
Stay corrected, my apologies.
So even though the current existing driveway is on the neighboring parcel, assuming we can't speak on their behalf, do you know what they're intended? How are they going to rectify that? I see that it's noted that there's a proposed barricade or chain. Do you know what the future of that is? And how are you going to sure that up that people don't continue to use that to come onto, into your lot?
Yeah, go ahead. The engineers had requested or proposed maybe a curb instead of the chain or barricade, so that a curb be built there.
Yeah.
So, you know, if we need to comply with that, we would comply with that instead.
We talked with public work staff to see what they would prefer, and the curb was asked for.
Yeah, it may be a good idea to convert that to grass. I know it's someone else's property, though, so.
Right, I would like to. I just don't know that they would. They wouldn't allow me. BMW would not. We worked for them for about almost two years, probably. Like, they will not sign an easement, at least. The owner, Mr. Daniels, but he's under mortgage still, and BMW Financial Services will not allow him to sign it, so.
But there's an existing hedgerow or tree line even beyond that, internal to their property.
Correct, yeah. And there's a chain-like fence, too. We've always maintained it, and that's why I said we'll maintain it. You know, we'll do all the work on it. Have an interest in. Hence the need to move the driveway. Otherwise, I gotta get a helicopter to fly over there. My client's onto my lot, so.
And you're agreeable to work with township staff and engineering regarding the right-of-way if township feels right-of-way is needed or not?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's fine.
It seems to me you're cleaning up your property and making it all legit, that you're not on somebody else's property, so. And increasing the parking and making your business more sustainable for the township, so. I think it's a great project.
Would you see an increased demand from water or sewer with the couple extra waiting rooms?
According to what the architect has told me, there shouldn't be any increase in any of that. There's not much plumbing in the new addition. There's maybe, I think, two sinks and.
Great. Is there anyone, oh, any other questions? Anyone in the audience? Is there anyone online? No one online? All right, so it looks like we need to... There's, I believe, is it six waivers? Five waivers? And waiver from land development we need to consider? I think the waivers would really be a deferral.
There's, so in asking for the waiver from land development, the two sections mentioned were waiver from preliminary plan and waiver from final plan. There's a condition in final plan in the sound of for plan recording. I think if we're getting the right-of-way dedicated, we're going to still want plan recording. And that's a condition in the proposed conditions. But I think we're okay as long as we have that as the. One thing I wanted to kind of bring up to everybody's attention, the waiver of land development, we're really, we're using the guidelines of full submission, making sure we have conditions that we need. A condition of plan recording is required.
And this is generally, it's addition of some parking and sort of retrofitting an existing building. It's the same as act use. My opinion, it's relatively de minimis.
And this property's been a business for as long as I've been alive, because I remember when I was E.S. Coons Florist, that goes back to the 70s, so.
All right, so.
Can we clarify where this additional waiver request letter is? I'm not sure it's part of the packet, and if it's not, maybe we could hand a copy up.
Yeah, we have copies.
Yeah, so if we're looking into considering something, it'd be nice to have an actual document. There's some deferrals, waiver requests, and whatnot that are a bit mixed up. We have everything collated. Yes. So these are the waiver requests from the pictorial items, you know, 400 feet, you know, 100 feet from the plant. So these are ones we typically grant if there's no need to see network connections and whatnot. But there's other deferral waiver requests, too. Do we have like a document that has everything collated, or?
They're in three letters. So there were two letters supplied by the engineer, one dated April 3, 2024. And that's the, those are the two waivers that they're seeking for the waiver from land development. Then there's a letter dated July 26.
So before we get too far ahead of ourselves, the April 3 letter, where's that in the packet?
Do we need to take care of the waivers from six waivers that were requested before we take the action regarding the waiver from land development? Does there need to be an order because there's several?
Yes, I think that would be a good idea. And Chris, if you can go through each of them individually, I think that would be helpful.
Sure, we can do that. So the April 3 letter.
So the April 3rd letter is the overall waiver from land development. The July 26th letter and the three waivers requested there are actually included in Pittcock's September 5th letter with commentary. The first relates to street rights of way reservation, and that the developer may be required to dedicate land for the future street widening. Excuse me, we are fine with the idea that we will dedicate at least two feet beyond curb for maintenance, deferring the balance, which is, as Pittcock had suggested, and that applies obviously to Crackers Port Road. The property line right now is actually in the center line of the road, so there is a good amount that we would need to dedicate to get to that two feet beyond curb as it exists today. So we're certainly fine with that and deferring the balance. The next relates to the street widening itself, which is 31236D3B. It's a dead-end road, so we didn't think that made sense. A request to have that deferred versus waived is certainly fine, as is noted in Pittcock's letter. And the last from the July 26th letter is the installation of sidewalks, given the location. Excuse me, and again, a deferral was recommended by Pittcock and we are fine with that in lieu of waivers. So each of those three, which are characterized as waivers, would effectively be deferrals. And then the last three are in the letter which was handed out earlier this evening, not five minutes ago. 31212B15 relates to requiring existing and proposed contours and information within 400 feet of the site. The second, 31212B19 and 20, requires depiction of significant man-made features in buildings within a hundred feet of the site, such as water laterals, fire hydrants, et cetera. And the final is 31212B21, which requires sidewalks, trails, driveways, street easements and rights of way, et cetera, within 400 feet of the site. For the three that are addressed by the letter dated yesterday, the properties in the vicinity are developed, there's really no issue with connectivity or future development or needing to plan things out for, for future expansion and growth, which is why we think it makes sense to not put those on, on the plan beyond what's shown today.
I agree with Chris, the deferrals are the way to go for the first three. I, in our letter, September 5th letter, we ask that the first two deferrals be expanded upon to include that certain SALDO section in there. For a street right-of-way, it's 31235B3C. And then for the SALDO deferral, 31236D3B, we'd also ask it be expanded to include SALDO 31235B3C as well.
I'm ready to make a motion to defer SALDO Section 31236D3 to include SALDO Section 31235B3C. To defer, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
There's opposed? None opposed? So moved?
I'll make a motion to defer SALDO Section 31236D3B to include SALDO Section 31235B3C.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 There's opposed? None opposed? So moved?
I'll make a motion to defer SALDO Section 31235B3A to III1.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's opposed?
Opposed?
So moved? Three more from the letter we just received. Anyone want to see if we're those? And make a motion?
Wait, waivers on these? Deferrals?
Yeah.
Except for maybe. Oh, no, yeah, or waivers. Okay, waiver from Section 312-12B15, I'll make a motion to grant that waiver.
I'll second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's opposed? None opposed? So moved?
Section 312B19 and Section 31212B20. Acquiring significant man-made features within a hundred feet, I will make a waiver, or kind of, yeah. I'll grant the waiver.
I'll second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? So moved?
And finally, Section 31212B21. Distinct features 400 feet from the site and make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second. Those in favor?
Patient, this waiver is the way that it's written. It's requiring the showing of the sidewalks, not the actual installation, correct?
Okay, yes.
Yep, these are all just pictorial items.
Very good.
Did someone second the motion?
I did.
Wait a second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? So moved? And we need to look into the H36 in the packet. Been through staff and engineering review, I think multiple iterations, so. Do make a decision if you feel waiver from land development is applicable.
We have a letter that was distributed to the board this evening with the conditions, if the board were to recommend a waiver from land development. Will that be read into the record tonight, or is that just?
So. We should have put them in your packet, we missed that. The conditions are draft conditions, you can certainly read them into the record or I can summarize.
Right.
I can certainly do that. So, and just to kind of piggyback on the whole waiver from land development, what we're doing is we're addressing any of the issues that we see as staff and putting them in as conditions, so that we can address it through that waiver process. So the first. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. First seven are complying with staff review. Eight is the public safety review. Nine is parks and rec. Ten is landscapes and shade tree. Eleven is the part where we talk about the right-of-way dedication. Twelve is kind of a catch-all. Thirteen talks about, again, outside approval. Fourteen is open invoices. And fifteen is a clean plan before Board of Commissioners. There'll be additional, likely be additional conditions when it gets to BOC, but this is what we as staff feels comfortable to address. Concerns reflected in, in our reviews.
Does the applicant's attorney have a copy of this letter?
Yes, I do.
And there really is no date or identifying marker on it, so.
No, it.
Call it. Planning, letter, recommendations, draft, and that you're okay with the recommendations to this point?
Correct, of the fifteen enumerated proposed conditions, we have no objection.
Just a follow-up question to Dave Manhart. The review letters in our packet, there were several that had outstanding items. The draft recommendations here encompass all of the letters.
The staff reviews?
Yes.
Yes, so what'll happen is when it comes to planning commission, they'll have addressed those letters. That's what we mean by a clean plan, so all of those comments will be addressed before it gets to the views.
Thank you.
In which case.
Can I just clarify that, because it's conditional approval, so essentially the conditions will remain the same at the Board of Commissioners level. And those conditions will be, will need to be satisfied prior to plan recording.
So is it, is it possible that as staff works through these conditions, that there could be additional conditions? When it does come to the Board of Commissioners that are born out of these reviews?
I suppose it's possible, but ideally we'll get them addressed. Again. There's EOC and then also waiver for ultimate catch-all.
Yeah, and our goal, based on the conditions, is actually to whittle this list down, because there are, as Dave mentioned, seven or eleven that relate to addressing staff and consultant review comments. The idea would be to get those satisfied to the greatest extent possible, so this list should actually be a little smaller before it goes to the board.
Is there any further comment from our solicitor?
No, I would just add that, you know, we see a long list here of dated review letters. If there are outstanding comments or additional comments, obviously we would be updating those dates in the conditions of approval.
You're agreeable?
Yes, absolutely. It's going to be a living, breathing process between now and the board.
So essentially the motion would be a waiver from Section 31211 and 31213 conditioned on the applicant agreeing to and satisfying the planning exhibit, fifteen comments, which address the board reviews and any. Well, all fifteen comments, board reviews and any other engineering comments that are on that letter.
Yeah, I agree with that, I think it's a conditional approval of the waiver.
Conditional approval. Conditional approval of the waiver. We'll say that one more time. So, we agree, what we would be making, so what we would be making is a conditional approval from sec, waivers from Section 31211 and 31213, based on the planning department's fifteen comment letters, subject to change or subject to review. And that would be our motion. It's my motion, I think that's where we're getting it.
I'll second that.
Before we, before we call for a vote, I do have one more question, since it's a conditional.
Mm-hmm.
As this is going through the land development process internally with staff, if there were to be an impasse where one of these items isn't agreeable mutually between the township and the developer, is there a possibility it comes back to planning if there are outstanding items that are not completed on this list?
Those, if there was something that wasn't in pass, it could end up back here, but I think everybody's intention is to.
Understood.
Things are, everything's achievable in the list, there's nothing so far that we had an impasse over, and I think that's part of running it through the process. When we've done waivers, bringing to the planning commission gives us an extra opportunity to work through additional conditions. Ideas to run through this public process, get everything out in the open so everybody's aware.
And one other question, if there are any significant changes to the plan as these comments are being addressed, is that an opportunity where it could potentially come back to the planning commission if there are significant changes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions regarding the motion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's opposed? None opposed? So moved?
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time, good luck.
Hey, we're on agenda, item 4D, Allen Town Cat Clinic Parking Lot Expansion. Manhart, would you like to do the staff presentation?
This is an application to develop the property located at 4090 West Tillman Street. Plan proposes to construct an eleven-space addition to the existing thirteen-space parking lot on a .70 acre parcel. The property is served by public water and public sewer and its own highway commercial. David M. and Michelle L. Paul are owners and applicants. This application was previously scheduled for the planning commission in June 15th, 2023. That meeting was canceled. The applicant did have all of the reviews at that time and has spent the time addressing those reviews and comes back with this revised plan.
Thank you, Miss Spett.
True. As mentioned in our September 5th memo to the township, a preliminary final land development review was performed by our office. As Dave has mentioned, the initial plan submission was back in May 2023 and comments were provided for the proposal in June 2023, but we did not recommend engineering approval at that time. A follow-up meeting with township staff was held in August 2023. The applicant has prepared revised plans to be presented for the PC tonight, and our September 5th memo reviews this current proposal. Some comments to note from our review pertain to general submission and drafting requirements. We note that Tillman Street frontage improvements within the right-of-way require a PennDOT highway occupancy permit. There is one waiver request for a proposed curbing along Tillman Street. We would defer to PennDOT regarding this request as it is located within their right-of-way. At this time, conditioned on addressing items in our memo, we can recommend engineering approval.
Thank you. Applicant like to do your presentation?
My name is Jeremy Shader, I'm with the Cell Architects and Engineers. Turn your mic off. Don't worry about it.
Okay, again, my name is Jeremy Shader, I'm with the Cell Architects and Engineers. I'm joined by David Paul, the owner of the property, and Abigail Bartels, who is also with the Cell Architects. So the owner wants to expand the parking lot, the current parking lot is not adequate to handle the, both the staff parking and the patient parking, so.
Could you pull your microphone a little closer to your arm?
So, yeah, they want to expand the parking lot by nine spaces. We, as was mentioned, we were into the township previously. We got some feedback from the engineer and the township staff, and we've taken that into consideration. Since then, we did add a sidewalk along Tillman Street at the recommendation of the township staff and also Leah Valley Planning Commission and Lanta. There is a bus stop not in farthest property, but a little bit down the street, so I guess the idea is parcels are developed and ultimately get connectivity along Tillman Street there. We are out of the zone of improvements with the PennDOT interchange project. We did reach out to them to make sure that our improvements did not conflict with their improvements, and they do not. They stopped just short. We did submit an HOP application to PennDOT, it's currently under review, we actually got a review letter this morning. There was a few minor comments that we need to work through still, but we are widening the driveway for the site. We are requesting a waiver of curb along the road, but there is no curb there today, and there's no curb on either side. We did ask PennDOT and PennDOT did not want the curb, and I actually didn't want the sidewalk either, but we pretty much said we have to put it in. So we're working with them on that. So that's pretty much via review. So that's pretty much via review of what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Thanks for adding the sidewalk. As a resident who lives nearby, getting closer to tying Tillman together with sidewalks headed towards the city is is good. And for as much as I drive by the the business, I see cars parked in the grass all the time. So I think it's certainly a worthwhile project. It looks like you've done your homework, so I think gone all to good, good start and a good plan.
Was there any comments from PennDOT regarding curbing?
Sorry?
Was there any comments from PennDOT regarding curbing?
No.
They didn't say one way or the other if they want curbing or don't want curbing.
They did not say one way or the other. Their biggest concern is that they were asking, why are we putting sidewalk somewhere where there's no connecting sidewalk?
They find interesting because they're putting sidewalk in with the interchange project.
They are. Okay.
Does township staff know if there's a deferral on the adjacent property to the west? I don't believe that's Hess windows.
I don't believe there are deferrals.
That's a very old business.
Yeah.
Predates.
I think I recall looking at it aiming in June, and I don't think there were any adjacent deferrals.
I mean, in terms of curb, I can say there is no curb on that section of Tillman going from.
On that side of the street.
Parkway Boulevard, well, both sides of the street. Parkway Boulevard up to the Starb, I think there's curb.
Well, American Bank has curbing.
Yeah, the American Bank side.
Tuesday's.
More sidewalk, but the side that this cat clinic's on does not have any. I think it doesn't have any until the.
Yeah, from Hess windows to Wegmans, there's no.
Yeah. We have this more so a PennDOT in terms of the curbing.
Section of Tillman included in the PennDOT widening that's coming, the improvements?
No, it stops just short. I don't know exactly the extents, but it sounds like it's not going that far.
Thank you.
Township have the ability to recommend curb? And that will into it, or is it PennDOT's right-of-way, so they're going to say what they're going to say?
I think we can certainly make a recommendation, but ultimately is, like somebody mentioned, there's curb at some of the businesses and not all the businesses. But it's one of those situations where.
Can we ask for input for the applicant to get input from PennDOT to see what PennDOT's preference is?
I think we could certainly, I think, you know, going, as we kind of discussed on the other, the process as this goes through, we will certainly, hopefully, certainly hopefully have an answer from PennDOT on this issue of curb before it gets to the EOC. Hopefully, that information will become available.
Should we just put a condition on the waiver?
Ending grant or whatever we decide. Some type of.
You can defer it and essentially a deferral of PennDOT. PennDOT could be the agency to call.
Depending, yeah, like defer dependent on the PennDOT comment.
Unless we really want the curb, wire it.
My opinion here is we, there is no, there's just no adjacent, like, we got, we got the sidewalk, which is the current push to get people off the road and give that accessibility. I don't think curb helps that accessibility, but the sidewalk does. Putting a curb here, literally a curb to nowhere on either end, and there'll probably never be curb, or at least not for a long time. I don't think the curb makes much sense.
I would think the curb would only make sense if we were able to call it in for other businesses up to the.
Yeah, like if we could call in Hess. Right, like if we could call in Hess or the church.
I would be in favor of a deferral, and if township staff wants to look at possibility in the future to have curbing along that section, that would make sense from a completed plan.
All right, does anyone have any thoughts? So anyone want? Is there anyone in the audience? There's no one in the audience here. Is there anyone online? All right.
May, I'm going to use your cell.
None online or?
I just have a question. Maybe I should know this, but there's a reference for a handhole on the drawings near the rear gravel lot. What is that?
That's, that's to connect the existing electric to the new light pole. We're moving the light pole over a little bit. So to be able to extend from the current location to the new, that's the adjunction box.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so while they're working through the IT issues, we have one deferral, and then we also have it's like 19 conditions. We have the township engineer is recommending. Nearing approval recommended. We're still having IT problems.
They haven't even needed themselves, and they haven't taken anything to the jackpots. They just.
Okay.
We have these 19.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so in terms of the, there's discussion about a deferral of curb conditioned upon PennDOT's this deferral of curb. Anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to respectfully, make a motion to do a deferral to chapter 312, section 35, subsection P, that we would defer curbing. However, if PennDOT ultimately required curbing in any subsequent application or subsequent revision, we would certainly back PennDOT's request. If they don't, they don't.
I'll second that. There's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's opposed. None opposed, so moved. We have 19 conditions. Mr. Manhart, would you like to go through those conditions?
Yes, so first, first condition requires the typical agreements that we have for subdivision, improvement, maintenance, security. The next seven are, address the comments of professional review and staff reviews. The Public Safety Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, and Parks and Rec Commission, Shatree Commission are the next few. Again, it's comply with comments. The 12 and 13 are outside agency, 14 is PennDOT. 15, 16 deal with easements and streetlights. Then 17, 18, 19 are the standard ones that we put on agreements or conditions.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion recommends one of the common plan rules based on
Yeah.
19 conditions that are laid out and then the how much is that they have is 19.
I'll second.
There's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's opposed. None opposed, so moved.
Did you see the comment in the chat? I think I just read the comment.
Okay.
The comment online, Jeff Benochi Day, job property management. Would you please elaborate on what you are asking of the adjoining properties regarding curbing?
Yeah, this is strictly for the applicant's property and the applicant's frontage. The applicant is adding some parking spaces, they, and they've added a sidewalk. The neighbors aren't required to do any, anything.
I think the question was made, if we had existing deferrals on any neighboring properties that we'd be willing to call them in, and it doesn't seem like there is.
There are no existing deferrals. All right. On agenda item number five.
Project.
Just to say thank you. Thank you.
Love you.
Thank you.
You're on. Agenda item number five, comprehensive plan update.
Thank you very much. At the last planning commission meeting, we talked about the draft South Whitehall Landscapes Plan. This is the Open Space Historic Agricultural Natural Resource Preservation Plan that the township started last summer. We have gone through about a month and a half now of board review, commission review, committee review, and public review. We have received favorable comments and some comments, which you'll see in your meeting packet. There are maybe about eight or nine comments or edits that we are proposing to the draft plan based on the comments that we've received. They are very minor. They include just some small edits to some pictures, graphics, maps, and the inclusion of a couple more local examples of case studies. Staff is currently making those edits, and we plan to have those ready to go for next week. What we're asking of the planning commission is a motion to recommend the South Whitehall Landscapes Plan to the Board of Commissioners for adoption at the September 18 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Anyone have any questions? Our edits? So I want to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
There's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
There's opposed. Opposed. All right, that's an item number six, transportation infrastructure update.
Sure, we're getting close to the new tip going into effect at the end of the federal fiscal year, so October 1st. And then there's also a technical committee meeting to be held next week.
When does the Tillman Street 309 interchange, when does that actually go under construction?
Do you know?
Right now, June of next year.
Oh, really? Yeah, okay. But I thought they had said earlier.
It keeps moving due to infrastructure and utility relocation and right-of-way acquisition. I believe the structures will be coming down this year.
Yeah, so we have demolition permits for some of the buildings that are required as part of the project. They'll start coming down and they'll start clearing.
With, with the delays that were occurring due to the pipeline relocation that has to occur, they decided to split it a little into a separate project to get that out of the way, the demolition.
And then when does the Betterment 309?
That one got pushed back again.
Okay.
Yeah.
How far, is there a date projected?
I think I heard 2026. But I, I just sort of got pushed back.
Okay. I was just curious.
They're running into big challenges with the cost of the construction and other projects, and it's, it's a domino effect, so. Well, like, like Aaron said, there's a new tip coming. We spent every penny that we had in the current tip, and like, there's nothing left until October 1st.
So. On, on the 309 section through the township, there isn't any, that that's what has been pushed back?
So the, there's two projects on 309. There's the Tillman Street interchange, so they'll do work north and south of that, and then a lot of work on Tillman. And the ramps are being reconfigured. And then there's kind of a gap up to Walbert. And then the 309 Betterment Project, or they keep changing what they're calling it, but extends from the Walbert intersection all the way up into North Whitehall. I forget how far up it goes, but I think Shankweiler.
Shankwiler Road.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been talking to them a long time on that. That project, they've been really good about taking township input. We've worked with Lanta, they have stops on there, and very good to work with on it, so it's kind of a shame to see it keep getting pushed back.
The big, the big part of that one is the intersection of Kernsville Orfield Road and 309 to add turn lanes, so it doesn't get, like, just north of Paul's Hardware, that intersection, where everything queues up, there'll be turn lanes there, so that's, that's the big improvement there. And there's other turn lanes, I think there's one at Hoffensville Road. They were talking about it, so.
Yeah, there were a couple other turn lanes. It's generally a restriping project, they're not doing a whole lot of widening, generally working within the existing right-of-way and cartway widths. Stormwater improvements aside.
There's a couple structures that have to come down at that intersection.
Yes.
The northwest side.
Yep.
But it will be a good improvement when it's done, whenever that is. They're not giving up on it because they've already spent money, and if they would give up on it, they would have to pay all the money back, and they're not doing that.
All right, agenda item number seven, courtesy of the floor. There's no one in the audience, is there anyone?
Is this when we go over what we have pending for next meeting?
Yes, Greg.
So, we have Tillman Holdings resubmitted, that's at 30, the Old Ollies, or it's 4750 Tillman Street. We have a Pasaco sketch plan on Blue Barn Road. Parkland Operations Center Phase 4, and I'm sorry, Greg's not here to hear this one, Brew Subdivision is resubmitted.
Oh, wow.
Been a while since we submitted.
Yes, so we have four tentatively on the agenda going through the review process.
It's like a three or four lot subdivision, been years and years.
It's been taken.
It gets smaller every time, they lose a lot.
I think it's a 2003 application day.
It's, it's, it predates me on this board, and I'm here since 2010, so.
And no indication from the one that was removed tonight?
We have a meeting scheduled, I think, early next week. They admit the resubmission deadline for October meeting is actually today, so they're not going to get that, so we'll probably see them.
Is there anyone online? All right, agenda item number eight, adjournment. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Aye. Unopposed, so moved.